Hello everyone, welcome to the second Decaturish.com County Commission Forum. I am your host, editor and publisher, Dan Wizenhut. Today, we are having the forum for DeKalb County Commission District Three. Our candidates are Commissioner Larry Johnson. Commissioner Johnson, how are you this morning?
Best day of my life. How are you, sir?
Can't complain. And Andrew Walter Bell. Mr. Bell, how are you this morning?
I'm good. How are you?
Cannot complain. Well, here's how it's gonna work. Each candidate is gonna get two minutes to make an opening statement. If they, when they're about thirty seconds away from the two-minute mark, I'm gonna put my finger up like this to let them know it's kinda time to wrap it up. And then we're gonna go into questions, and they're gonna have three minutes to answer each question. If you're watching us right now and you would like to ask a question yourself, please jump in and put a question in the chat and we will try to get to it. So Commissioner Johnson, let me pull up my stopwatch. We're gonna start with you. You're gonna have two minutes to make your opening statement, starting right now, sir.
All right. Good morning to the Decaturish crowd and thank you, Dan, for putting on this forum and thank you, Mr. Bell. You all stay strong. I'm Commissioner Larry Johnson. It's about linking, leveraging and empowering, linking our residents to resources, leveraging public-private partnerships, and working to empower through education awareness. And I've been that commissioner who just didn't sit here. I got out here and make sure we had results that we can see. When we didn't have sidewalks in our areas, I made sure I pushed and made those sidewalks happen. When we wanted to have great parks, I worked on that to make those happen. When we didn't have the air conditioning, our recreation centers, I made that happen. When we were trying to put economic development in our community, when folks said our area was going down, work with our local businesses and businesses we bought in, like Walmart, and work with now a $380 million investment. We're gonna have the largest movie studio in North America. The largest investment in South DeKalb's history, 2,400 jobs. It was all about collaboration and partnerships. And then we went through the pandemic for the last two years. I just not couldn't sit back when we had thirty percent of our residents uninsured. We worked with the Oakhurst Health Center, now Medcora, to make sure the residents and essential workers had tests and shots. Over thirty thousand have been done to date. Over seven thousand shots have been given. And then we did food. Over twenty tons of food I do annually. We do cleanups because we wanna make sure our areas are clean and environment is strong and having a great thing. Then we have trails. We have with the Michelle Obama Trail I created. We made walking the official exercise for the county, the first county in the country to do it, and was recognized by our First Lady, Michelle Obama. So those are the things I wanna focus on. Of course, as we move forward, I wanna focus more on prevention and mental health because this COVID virus is more than a mental health virus. It's a, it's a mental virus. And we wanna make things happen. So thank you all. I need your support. I need your vote on May 2nd through the 20th or May 24th. Results you can see. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Andrew Walter Bell, you have two minutes to make your opening statement.
Thank you. I would like to take the time out to thank Decaturish and Commissioner Johnson as well. I am a native son of Decatur, Georgia. I was born at, in Decatur. I was raised in Decatur. I've seen a lot going on that's not to my liking, and that's why I've entered into this race. Commissioner Johnson has talked about sidewalks. I've, I've seen some of the sidewalks that he's, he talks about, but they were already there to begin with. Instead of making the sidewalks on the other side of the street, like in my neighborhood, Snout Finger Road, they, they repaired sidewalks that were already there. We don't need that kind of leadership that's gonna basically just waste money instead of making sidewalks on both sides of the street. That, you know, he's making repairs to sidewalks that are already in existence when we need sidewalks on both sides of the street. There are none on Columbia Drive. People have to walk on the grass. Panthersville Road, there are none. Several, I don't know where the money was spent, but we need some sidewalks. Economic development, I don't see it. We've, we've lost several businesses. Basically, they've turned into flea markets or vacant buildings. We don't have bowling alleys, movie theaters, restaurants, all those amenities have left the area. Chandler Road still has buildings from the 1940s. I don't know what kind of planning and stability that we have, but we need new leadership, new ideas. Thank you.
So the next question, you'll have three minutes, I'll reset my timer here, to answer, and we're gonna start with Andrew Walter Bell. The question to you, sir, is why are you a better candidate than your opponent? You have three minutes.
I'm a better candidate than my opponent, just like I said. My, my Commissioner Johnson, he may have started out well, but he's lost his way. I know, I remember when the county was thriving, when he came from Chicago. And now South DeKalb is turning into Chicago. I have new ideas, new plans to get the county, the district going back in the direction when people wanted to move here, live here, raise their families here.
Okay. Commissioner Johnson, same question to you. Why are you a better candidate than your opponent? You have three minutes, sir.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. Why am I? Cause I'm not looking backwards. I'm looking forward. When I got here, I made sure I got involved, I had to engage. I started working with our residents. If you go down Chandler Road, we didn't have sidewalks. When you go down Glenwood Road, you didn't have sidewalk. Those are major corridors that were dealing with major pedestrian injuries in our community, and folks were getting hit, were getting killed. Now they have a walkable, safe area to go in. And as far as economic development, Avondale Mall had went down. And we put a new Walmart there that created four hundred new jobs that, that asked, what it did was create all these. It created new banks. It helped move our area to a whole nother level in our community, and we did it on Gresham Road as well. And so it's all about moving forward and thriving together. It's about collaboration and partnerships. I work with our border health to make sure that we have the resources as it moves forward to help our residents to be well. I work with, with trails in our area. We didn't have trails. We weren't talking about trails, but now we have some of the best trails probably in the state of Georgia. And now people can walk, can bike, can ride and do the great things that they wanna do. We have new recreation centers, where we didn't have them before. When I got in office, we didn't have air conditioning in most of our recs. Now we have those air conditioning our recs. So it's about buildings, it's about linking, leveraging, empowering. It's about results you can see. And so we wanna have leadership that moves forward. That's me. That we can keep going and building on the assets of the residents and work together to move South DeKalb and the district and the county forward. And so that's where I think I'm the better candidate.
Thank you. Commissioner Johnson, next question, we're gonna start with you. The one penny splosh sales tax will soon sunset unless the cab voters approve its renewal. Are you in favor of renewing splosh? And if so, what will be your priorities for how the money should be spent? You have three minutes.
Thank you, sir. Great question. Yes, I was the one who fought to get it passed, and over eighty percent of the residents supported that. We had a great vote, and they wanted to make sure because at one point, DeKalb County, we didn't have the funding to pay for streets. Our one penny went to MARTA, cause we were innovative and creative, wanted to have a transportation center, but we didn't have an extra penny. We were only paying twenty miles of roads because we didn't have money for infrastructure. But with the advent of the splosh, we now have over $600 million. You see a new fire station coming up on Priest Crescent, Columbia. You see streets now getting paved over. We are, we're close to two hundred paving of streets. The worst streets we did first. I brought a hundred million dollars to our district to do trails, to do sidewalks, to do traffic infrastructure improvements. So that's why it should be done again, but this next time, I wanna focus on just buildings that we need. We need more buildings, parks and recs. I wanna do, I'm gonna build a new one at Midway. I wanna do, build a brand new one in the Ellenwood area. They don't have any recreation centers, intergenerational center. The one like I created, Exchange Park, was the first intergenerational center in the southeast. Indoor track, volleyball, basketball, pool, computer labs. We wanna be able to do that. We couldn't do it with the first splosh because it limited to judicial buildings. And so they wouldn't let me put the type of expansion around intergenerational wellness that could have done all of these things ahead of time. So I thank the taxpayers of, of DeKalb who voted for this splosh, and you've seen the results of it because we're doing buildings, we're helping with our public safety, with vehicles, and we're doing the quality of life things we wanna do around infrastructure. Thank you, Mr. Hunt, Wizenhut.
No problem. You can just call me Dan and be all right. Andrew Walter, Andrew Walter Bell, same question to you, sir. The one penny splosh sales tax will soon sunset unless the cab voters approve its renewal. Are you in favor of renewing splosh? And if so, what will be the priorities for how the money should be spent? You have three minutes.
Well, I'm for splosh, if it's spent correctly. I think this past splosh has been wasted. Commissioner Johnson keeps talking about the roads. I remember when the roads were smooth. I remember when there weren't potholes. He's had almost twenty years to make them to the parks. I'm forty-three. I'll be forty-four this year. Midway is essentially the same park as it was when I was a kid going there. That's not leadership. Those are excuses. I personally, a month ago, on Glenwood, there was a pothole and the, and the boulder had came out of the hole. I personally removed that because cars kept rolling over and crashing into it. I moved it onto the side. And it was weeks later before the, before that pothole was fixed. Seriously, I remember when the roads, the county paved those roads. The roads were smooth. Now, what we do, we give the splosh money to contractors who don't live in the community, who don't employ anybody from the community. And all our money goes outside of the cap count. And in turn, we still have the same problem with the same roads that are not fixed. Yes, we do need some improvements in the parks because right now we have a problem with our youth. They have no productive act, like when I was growing up, like before Commissioner Johnson came here from Chicago. We do need those improvements, so that's why I'm for splosh. And with me as commissioner, the money won't get wasted.
Thank you. Commissioner Johnson, we have a little time left. Would you like thirty seconds or so to respond?
Yes, I don't know where Mr. Bell has been, but he needs to understand that potholes and all of those things are done up under CEO's office. So that's the administrative function of the government, and that's why he has to understand that. But my job was to get the funding. And that's what we did. We put the funding in place for paving of streets, for new sidewalks, for parks improvements. And if he ever ride around, he will see that we have had those type of improvements in our parks. And so I didn't just have to come here, but I understood that the value of the residents in our community was worth it. And that's why I fought for them and it was a part of it.
Andrew, I'll give you thirty seconds to respond to that, and then we'll move on to the next question.
I just keep hearing all of these excuses and why, you know, I, I see some roads, some, some stuff getting paved now, now it's election time. But people know, they know they have to keep taking their car and get in the real line. They know that the roads aren't as smooth as they were twenty years ago. You know, just, just, just think, just think back to when the roads were smooth, when the county did the roads, when your money wasn't getting wasted by these contractors.
Thank you.
Buddy, buddy.
Thank you. All right, moving on to the next question. We're gonna start with, I believe we'll start with Andrew Walter Bell this time. After several failed attempts, a charter review commission will soon begin to study and make recommendations on the form of government in DeKalb County. What changes would you make in the DeKalb County form of government? And do you think DeKalb should abandon the elected CEO form of government? So, Mr. Bell, you've got three minutes.
Well, I'll start with the last question first. Obviously, the kind of government we have is not working. We are losing territory jurisdictions. When I, like I said, I had to go back when I was growing up. I, 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 I have a lot of memories here. And, you know, since I've been, the last twenty years, we've lost Dunwoody, they've created a city. Brookhaven has created a city. Shambly's makes more territory. Doraville has NHS more territory. Tucker is a new city. Stonecrest is a new city. So basically, with, 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 with the exception of a, a small amount of land or territory on the other side of Lawrenceville Highway, most of the unincorporated, unincorporated area is in South DeKalb. And being that most of these other jurisdictions are not incorporated, the current system of government that we have does not make sense. We have commissioners passing regulations that don't affect any others place other than unincorporated DeKalb, that's mostly in South, South DeKalb. Most of that area is, but combined with District Three and District Four. So we definitely need changes to the government, to the government. I would welcome a study, preferably on cities or counties prospering in the United States of America and copy what they're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Johnson, same question to you. After several failed attempts, Charter Review Commission will soon begin to study and make recommendations on the form of government in DeKalb. What changes would you make to DeKalb County's form of government? And do you think DeKalb should abandon its elected CEO form of government? You have three minutes.
Yes, sir. Just to, just to say that I've appointed someone to serve on that Charter Review Commission, that we wanna get this, that's getting started. Also, I was one of the champions for the change in our form of government. At one point, the cap county commissioners couldn't even chair their own meetings. The CEO was chairing the meetings like the president was chairing the legislative branch. And so we changed that, and we also made it so that we can have authority to set our own agenda. So I was one of the main proponents who pushed for that back in 2008 to make sure that we can be representative and accountable to the people. In terms of annexation and cityhoods, the county government don't have anything to do with that. That's a state function around annexations and cityhoods. So, Mr. Bell, just get some more education on that topic because it has nothing to do with what we do locally. As a, as a legislative branch, it's more in the state fiduciary responsibilities to do that. And so we have to see what the charter review comes up with. I don't like to go before our citizens because we put them in charge and to come up with recommendations, and I look forward to hearing their recommendations and making sure that we can implement what needs to be done as we move forward. Thank you.
Mr. Bell, would you like thirty seconds to respond, sir?
Definitely. Commissioner Johnson, I'm very well educated on the process. And obviously, those jurisdictions do not wanna remain in unincorporated DeKalb because of the leadership like that you have shown. And so they chose to either create new cities or annex more, or people wanted to leave unincorporated DeKalb and become annexed by cities that were nearby. So that's just the facts.
Thank you. Commissioner Johnson, thirty seconds to respond if you wish.
Just so that we need to move forward with the Charter Review Commission, that the citizens are at the table, can make recommendations to our state legislators and to see where they wanna go to continue to make us effective and more efficient. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Johnson, we'll start to, and, and, you know, just, I, I respect the passion. If y'all, if we keep going back and forth, we might not have time to get to other questions, so I'm just letting you know. We do have a pretty lengthy list. Commissioner Johnson, I wanted to start this question.
He said I wasn't educated, Dan. I'm like, I can't let that go.
I, I completely understand, and when there is, there are claims made, we're gonna try to give you all time to, but that, but that applies to both of y'all. Just letting y'all know that the more cross talk we have, the harder it is to get to our list. But if there needs to be time for a response, we'll certainly give you all time for a response. All right. Commissioner Johnson, his next question's gonna start with you. The Board of Commissioners has exclusive decision-making over zoning decisions. The decisions impact the cost of housing and the stability of neighborhoods. Land use and zoning impacts the tax base. What changes would you make in land use and zoning policy? You have three minutes, sir.
Well, as you stated, we, over the zoning portion of it, is more to work with our comprehensive plan that we're doing now to update it. We now have a unified plan. We're doing transportation and zoning together with the first county in the state to now combine the two as we look at housing and transportation. But we need to make sure we have more of our workforce housing. We have a, what I call a crisis in terms of trying to find housing for our essential workers, our firefighters, our police officers. And using this plan to make sure that our land use decisions can best reflect where we need to go in the future. Before I got in office, it was all over the place, and you see a lot of those things that now we're putting in place where you didn't have. At one point, you can put vinyl siding on homes. Before I got in office, you can't do that number one South DeKalb. Before I got in office, you can't do that in the one South DeKalb. Uh, we didn't have sidewalks. You had to put into subdivisions. Now I mandate sidewalks and street lights in subdivisions. And so those are the, some of the things that I've done early on as it relates to zoning. And also we created overlay districts that allows us to build uh large mixed-use developments. And when we didn't have a land use for that because we need to have more live work and play in our community. So transportation, I push for rail along I-20 and we continue to push for that. We don't need to see another bus. And so all of that plays a part in housing, transportation and land use. And those are things I've advocated for and will continue uh to advocate for in the future because it's all about our residents and our families having a great place to live, work, play and worship.
Thank you. Uh, Andrew Bell, same question to you. Uh, Board of Commissioners has exclusive decision-making over zoning decisions. That affects everybody in the county. What changes would you make uh in land use and zoning policy in DeKalb County? You have three minutes.
Okay, this, this topic strikes me personally. The county has done a terrible, terrible job as far as zoning. Code compliance, you name it. That planning and stability department needs to be revamped. Some people need to be removed. Here it is. I'm a disabled Marine Corps veteran. Wanted to put my, I put a, a, a addition so that I can uh be accommodated with my, with my wheelchair, uh, my uh mobile uh chair. And I haven't even gone through the process a year, over a year and a half. Like I said before, you can look at Calhoun Road, those hot, those commercial districts, you got, you have houses from 1940s and 50s. Meanwhile, you go less of probably a mile away uh in the city of Atlanta on uh, let's say from Memorial Drive and Warren Avenue all the way, all the way downtown. And it's, 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 it looks like a new city. And then you come on Calhoun Road and Memorial Drive, just like you stepping off in the past, you stepping into the past. So we can tell that whatever planning, zoning, whatever, whatever's going on, it's not working. And we don't need the same people in charge anymore.
Thank you. And I just want to say y'all are doing a great job of staying under time. Uh, the more, the more you do that, the more we can get to all our questions. So I appreciate that. Uh, Andrew Bell, uh, we're gonna start this next question with you. Um, do you believe that Cab County should encourage affordable housing? If yes, uh, where should it go? And if not, why not? Uh, you have three minutes.
Uh, yeah, we definitely need affordable housing. Uh, there's some market factors that are preventing uh people from obtaining affordable housing that probably need to be addressed first. Uh, as 60 Minutes uh noted uh about a month ago, uh, there are these billion-dollar companies that have gone to find up single-family housing. Not only that, they uh are constructing neighborhoods strictly for rent, which to me is un-American. Uh, you know, the American dream is to own a house. And so by them buying up all the single-family homes, uh, it forces uh people that want to live in a single-family home to rent. And therefore uh it's a, it's a domino effect. So uh people that were once renting uh single-family homes can no longer afford them. They're going into apartments. Those that uh were in apartments are now living in the, in the state hotels. And those that can't afford state hotels anymore are homeless on the street. Some, a, a lot of whom are working. Uh, when I was growing up here in the Cab County, there were no school buses pulling up to extended state hotels. Uh, there were no s- school buses pulling up to extended state hotels where busloads of kids 20 years ago. Whatever leadership we've had has failed us and we need new ideas, uh, new leadership.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Johnson, same question to you. Do you believe the county should encourage affordable housing? If yes, where should it go? And if not, why not? You have three minutes.
Yes, sir. A great question. I've been focusing on workforce housing. Uh, if you look at our district, we have a lot of affordable housing already. And the policies that said housing policies are at the federal and state level. So the county just works on the policies that we receive and we get the funding to move forward. We have to work more closely with uh developers, public-private partnerships to do more zoning around workforce housing for our firefighters, our teachers, our nurses, uh, to, and police officers to move in our community. We need that middle. The middle is what the strength is and we have to continue to focus on in our community. That help us, it helps us uh in the housing perspective to help raise our medium income uh to a level that allows us to uh move forward and to keep moving forward. So housing is in the, affordable is in the higher the beholder, but we have to make sure that we have a strong middle uh to make us move forward. And so uh the county has a, doesn't have housing up under it. Uh, the Cab Housing Authority is under HUD and that's a federal program. And the state has a program that does tax credits to affordable housing. And so developers have to apply for those funding to get that to move forward uh in our communities. And so that's the partnership we need to work with, the federal, state and county partnership. It doesn't, it's not just one entity trying to do all of the housing initiatives in our community.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Johnson, we're gonna start this next question with you. Uh, are there specific neighborhoods or places in your district that warrant a focused small area plan to guide future development? You have three minutes.
Yes, I would say uh more of our McNair and Ellinwood area. Uh, the areas that, that want to have more of a residence uh infused decision-making process. I think the small area plan will give us a, a smaller subset for people to come together and, and to just plan out, to understand and to guide the process. It helps the planning department uh to be be, they better able to assist on what the needs are. And so I'm for having that voice. I think it's needed. I think that's part of this whole process of, of live, work and play. And I think that's a great opportunity for us as we go to the 22nd century. As we deal with the digital age, we have the Z's and the millennials are now uh coming into their own. To have them at the table to help make decisions for the future. And I think the smaller plans will be a great asset uh for all of us in DeKalb.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, Andrew, same question to you. Um, are there specific neighborhoods or places in your district that warrant a focused small area plan to guide future development? You have three minutes.
Uh, with the exception of, of, of probably uh the, uh, the Cab, Atlanta area, uh, because they're doing well. Uh, the rest of the district is in dire need of, of, of development. Uh, as I've been, as I was, as I have been campaigning, I go out on Panthersville Road, Ellinwood, Conley, there are no grocery stores. They have to travel several miles just to go to a grocery store. Like I said, Commissioner Johnson has been here 20 years. Uh, I, I just, I'm, I'm, just sounds like excuses or just, you're just trying to get elected for another four years. Uh, he's had ample amount of time to provide uh sidewalks on uh Panthersville River Road. In that area, he's had ample amount of time to uh en- encourage uh, uh, uh grocery stores to come to the area. Uh, instead, like Calhoun Road, they lost Kroger. Uh, that Kroger had been there since the 1970s. Um, we, we've lost uh several important uh, uh, quite in life uh, businesses uh that would help the community over his timeframe. And yes, we do need uh to focus on these neglected areas and bring them back to life like Glenwood Road, uh Columbia Drive, uh Calhoun Road, uh Flatscho's, Panthersville, River Road. Uh, we need to help these areas.
Commissioner Johnson, would you like uh 30 seconds to respond to that? And then I'll give uh Andrew Bell 30 seconds.
Well, Mr. Moderator, I want to stick with what you said. If we keep going back and forth and trying to sling mud, it's not gonna get the questions answered. And so I just stick with what I've said before. Uh, you look at the area, Calhoun Road, 20 years ago, we didn't have a new library, didn't have sidewalks, we didn't have a senior center, we didn't have a $25 million apartment that's now affordable for our seniors in our community. Uh, those things are happening. There's an overlay district and you see new buildings coming out the ground because it is overlay district. Before you didn't have overlay district. So that's why you see the hodgepodge of taking away the penny car lots that used to be on Calhoun Road. So there's been results you can see. And so I've been moving forward. So I would just like to focus on how do we move forward and not try to go backwards. Thank you.
30 seconds to you, uh, Andrew.
The Wayfield uh is, is, is gone from uh, uh, Calhoun and McAfee. That neighborhood doesn't have a grocery store. Rainbow in Calhoun Road, Kroger is gone. Yeah, they put a big bear, but it's not the same as Kroger. We need people that are looking, really looking out for the community instead of these developers. Um, yeah, I applaud Commissioner Johnson. I have to give credit where credit is due, the library, uh, the senior center. Give credit where credit is due, but he has, he could have done a lot more in these last 20 years.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, so uh Andrew, I think we're gonna start with you. I'm getting a little mixed up on who started what, but I think it's your turn. Um, how and when should the DeKalb Development Authority use incentives or tax breaks to encourage development? You have three minutes and then we're gonna give Commissioner Johnson three minutes.
I think it's necessary uh to uh, tax breaks can be uh a necessary tool uh to uh encourage the right developers to come. However, uh, in the situation where so many people are coming to the area, I think it's more not that the developers don't want to come to South DeKalb. I don't think they're really being allowed to. Like I'm gonna use the same example for Memorial Drive and Warren Avenue. I understand that's the city of Atlanta and they, that, that uh, that's the jurisdiction. But you go less than two miles and you can't tell me that the developers don't want to move two miles away. So there's some kind of uh bureaucracy restriction keeping the developers from coming uh into South DeKalb County. I don't know uh exactly what it is because I'm not at the planning and stability department. I'm not on the Board of Commissioners, but what I do know, they've done a bad job. Now, this movie theater or whatever, that's uh, you know, pretty much was a commercial area anyway. Um, but where we need uh more development, uh, more stores, department stores like uh Target or, or, or any other department store because they're vast. Uh, like, let's go back to Calhoun Road. There was a flea, there used to be Zares, now it's a flea market. Uh, uh, flea market is closed. Uh, there are several other buildings. The bowling alley is closed. Uh, you know, it's just, so we do need the development. I don't mind giving tax breaks as long as they're bringing uh benefit to the county. Importantly, employing uh the, uh, some of our youth uh that are in desperate need of work.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Johnson, same question to you. How and when should the DeKalb Development Authority use incentives or tax breaks to encourage development? You have three minutes.
Thank you. Great question. I think you use them when you're trying to work in underserved communities who, who need that economic infusion to make things happen. And as you saw with the $380 million investment that were gonna happen at, at 285 in Boulder Crest, it's gonna do phenomenal work for our community. And also you see Long Memorial Drive, we, brand new bank, OzK Bank, you see the remodeling of the Kroger. Uh, you see all these, all of those things happen in this time and you ask those business owners, do they regret it? And that all these on Memorial Drive has been remodeled. It looks fabulous in the inside. I fought to make sure we have that in our community. Calhoun Road is on the comeback. If you look at how it was 20 years ago, it's not the same as it looked today. And you don't control the market forces. My job is to do the infrastructure improvements and we bought those infrastructure improvements along Memorial Drive and Calhoun Road that enhances what we have to do. If you ask anybody, and we had the Great Recession, 2008, most folks lost half the value in their home. That wasn't because of the county. That was because of banks who came in and was unscrupulous with their loaning practice and made those happen. And you've been through two recessions prior, after that. And so we had some tough times, but I have worked with our residents. I work with our business owners to try to push us through. But a lot of folks, we just gotta keep moving. And that's what I've been able to do, to show results, to link them, to leverage and empower, to make sure residents and business owners are at the table uh to guide us, to strengthen us. And we just, we provide loans, access to loans from ACE to uh, to 108 loans to help businesses who want to be in our community. And that's my job. If I see them, I go out there to try to help them to incentivize and bring people to our community. And so this is a great area. And this is an area of just moving forward. Great people. We have great businesses in our community as well. Uh, you, you gotta make sure you look at the whole picture. And as a county commissioner, you can't pick and choose what you want to do. You gotta make sure you, you engage in all of the processes and you, recessions to uh diseases and viruses. All those days impact economic growth. Uh, and you just have to move forward and be a catalyst and a convener to say, hey, we still got our best days ahead and that's what I've been pushing in, in our district.
Thank you. Uh, somewhat related to that, uh, I know a lot of people view cities as a way to uh promote economic development uh to increase the responsiveness of government. Commissioner Johnson, we're gonna start this next question uh with you. What is your opinion of efforts to create new cities in DeKalb County? You have three minutes.
My opinion is it, it, it takes away from our, our commercial base. If you look at the cities that were created. Uh, but I do believe it takes away from our commercial base. And I believe folks who want to have opportunity uh to do it, it starts at the state level. Uh, you work with your state representatives and they give you the power to have the referendums and make those things happen. You know, I believe in self-determination. You want those things to happen. But just know becoming a city is not a panacea because you still have to deal with medium incomes. That's what draw businesses to your community. You have to deal with economic incentives. You have to deal with those issues that surround that whole process. So creating another government uh layer will not bring you any faster to the results that people are saying is gonna happen. It takes effort and that's what we've done over the last uh couple of years in terms of grocery stores, working with sidewalks, bringing new parks, putting our fire and rescue stations close to, around our communities that can help them and guide them through the process and also our parks, creating amenities that allows us uh to make great decisions when businesses want to relocate into your community.
Thank you. Andrew Bell, uh, same question to you. What is your opinion of efforts to create new cities in DeKalb County? You have three minutes.
Uh, well, first of all, I, I think the citizens should have the right to vote if they want a city or not. Uh, I'm sure many of whom are tired of losing uh businesses such as the Bank of America on Columbia Drive or the Wells Fargo on Columbia Drive. Or uh they wanna uh take their kids to the bowling alley or to the movie theater, uh, things that aren't in existence anymore. Or maybe they want to have more control over uh their area. Um, uh, cityhood seems to work uh for a lot of these uh cities, uh new cities. Uh, Stonecrest, uh, the Home Depot uh made an investment. Uh, there's a lot of building going on. It wasn't done before when they were part of uh, uh, DeKalb County. Uh, same with Brookhaven, same with Dunwood. Uh, what I do know is the current system of government is not working. Uh, there needs to be changes. Um, if, even if it is a city, uh, we need to make sure that uh this time around, we get the charter correct. Uh, that we get uh the type of safety that we, that we looking for, that we look, that we get the type of planning and uh development that we're looking for. Uh, this is a time, if there should be a city of, of South DeKalb, that we get it right from the first, from the very beginning. There should not be a rush uh to uh get a city, but uh it should be under consideration.
Thank you. Uh, Andrew Bell, we're gonna start the next question with you. Um, do you support ending drug testing for marijuana for people applying for certain jobs in DeKalb County? So those would be jobs, you know, that are non-public safety oriented. Uh, you have three minutes.
Uh, yes, I, 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 I don't agree with uh drug testing for marijuana at all. Um, it's not the industry. Uh, it was once legal in the United States. Uh, it became illegal in the 1930s uh when uh uh organization before the, later became FBI was created in order to lock people up. And it's still in effect. It's negatively impacting people that look like me. Uh, cities like Clarkston in Atlanta, uh, if you get caught with less than an ounce of marijuana, it's a citation. Um, Mr. Johnson, he, he, he looks like me, but I don't think he's ever proposed any kind of legislation. Uh, to decriminalize marijuana. Instead, we have young adults that get criminal records. Uh, because they're in possession of marijuana and it needs to stop. As far as the county workers, as long as you don't come, as long as you're not high on the job, have no problem with you doing your spare time for recreational purposes.
Commissioner Johnson, uh, three minutes, same question to you. Do you support ending drug testing for marijuana for people applying for certain jobs in Decav County? Those would be. Jobs that are, uh, not in a public safety role. Uh, three minutes.
Well, first of all, I did support the legislation of one, less than an ounce to decriminalize that. And that's now before the state legislature, they have to, based on our charter. We can't just approve, uh, that to go forward. So I did, that was sponsored by, and your paper covered it by Commissioner Rita Davis Johnson. So I think substance abuse is something that, uh, should not be criminalized. You need to get treatment. Uh, people need help. We shouldn't be using them, uh, to lock them up. And so I focus on treatment as a, as a prevention person. You need to have those things in place. The other part is, um, just like with alcohol, you can have a refilizer. Uh, at work, but just, we don't have the test to do that for marijuana. So at work. So we still need to watch that carefully before we just say yes for someone to have it. And, and I know my opponent talked about you can do it at home. But then you do it at home, you're still coming to work. You still have an impact on the workers and people around you. So. It's all about prevention. It's all about education and learning. Uh, but at this, at this point, uh, we need to have more studies. Before we just say blanket, uh, a person can, can use drugs and come to work.
I.
Not drugs, not drugs. The question was marijuana. Dan, the question was marijuana.
Well, I, I want to push back just a little bit, um, in, in terms of, you know, I don't think anybody is, is advocating for anybody to come to work under the influence. Uh, but you know, we're talking about a, a, a drug that's legal, I believe in 18 states at this point. Uh, and you know, the only, the threshold for testing, you know, it does, it can't tell if you're, uh, actually have used recently. Um, so I just, just want to clarify a little bit. Uh, are you quantifying marijuana as a, as a drug of abuse that? Even using in your off hours could affect your performance on the job, Commissioner?
Well, you, you asked a clarifying question, but the, the question is, when you're dealing with. Any type of, uh, it's a gateway drug, Dan, and you know that as well. So it's. You can't just separate different categories. Well, that's why I said you need to do more, uh, in terms of just asking and clarifying. To see where we are with that whole process. And so we need to look at the process and understand. But I, before I just say yes, uh, to a blanket, um, use at work. I think you need to really have, as a person who worked as a substance abuse counselor. Uh, as, as, as I went through school and the person who have seen drugs firsthand, the impact that it is, and you ask a lot of the substance abuse counselors. They would tell you that may be a time when you see something on that to get that person some help because it may lead to other drugs. And so I see this opportunity around prevention to help the person, not to hurt the person.
Well, I, I could be sure. I think you and I clearly have some, uh, will have some personal disagreements about, um, whether it's a, it's a drug of abuse, but I do respect your opinion and Mr. Bell.
No, it's, it's, yeah, I've just said, and then remember the, the science and all those things are out. I mean, and that, and the positive parts of, of it is that we can use it for medicinal purposes. And I'm, I'm, I'm wholeheartedly in support of that. So.
I, I do think that there is certainly everyone on all sides of the issue could agree that we could all benefit from more information and.
Yes, I agree. And that's what I was saying.
I don't think anybody disagrees.
Saying, yeah, I'm not, yeah, you gotta have more information.
I don't want to get off on this off ramp too much, but, uh, Mr. Bell, if you want to, if you want to chime in for 10 seconds and then we'll move on.
Yes, I, I, I'm, I'm, um, most of the time when people say gateway drugs, stuff like that, they're referring to minors. I'm referring to individuals over the age of 21, uh, that, uh, pay their own bills. That are responsible adults. Um, if you have a substance abuse problem, then hey, there's avenues to get help. Uh, but most people are responsible, whether it be alcohol or marijuana use. Uh, it's legal in a lot of places.
Thank you.
Uh, instead of, just for example, I'm a, I'm a Marine Corps veteran. I have disabilities. And they prescribe me pain medication. It makes me tired and sleepy and things of that nature.
Sure. Uh, and we, and we respect your service and we, and we, and we respect your opinion. I, I don't want this conversation to go to pot, pun intended. Uh, we do, we do have to move on, um, to, to other questions, uh.
Good one, Dan. Good one, Dan.
I didn't, you see what I did there? I didn't, I didn't expect it to get so lively, but that's okay. Um, that is all right. That's happened sometimes. Uh, so where were we? Uh, Commissioner Johnson, this is a question that I, I think about a lot because I'm a homeowner. I was lucky enough to get in. Uh, into this neighborhood before everybody realized it was cool. Uh, and you know.
You know you're rich. You know you're rich, Dan.
That, that's, that must be it. But, uh, according to the tax assessor's office, I am, uh, cause my, my, uh, property values doubled. And you know, we talk a lot about, uh, affordable rentals and that is very important. And I, and I think everybody agrees on the need for workforce, workforce. Housing, but what I think people don't think about is, uh, when your taxes go, when your property values go up, your taxes go up. Even if you're a borrower, uh, you know, it still affects your escrow, which affects your monthly payments. Uh, we've had that happen to us a couple of times. So my question, uh, for you, uh, I believe we're going to start with, uh, Mr. Bell. Is, uh, as property values go up, taxes are going to go up for homeowners as well. Should the county consider reducing its millage rate to help homeowners? You have three minutes.
Uh, although I'm sympathetic, I think more of the issue is even though the county, if the county is collecting more, uh, revenues. Uh, then they should be, uh, uh, a better steward of the money. Um, uh, I don't think that lowering the millage rate or taking, uh, funds away from the county. Cause that, that might actually cause other problems. Uh, if the county is providing certain services. And then they say, well, because of this decreased funds, we're not going to be able to provide services anymore. Like. For example, sanitation, I remember coming up, uh, sanitation was twice a week. Now they barely even pick up your trash. If you have a bag on the side of your trash can, it doesn't go in the trash can, they don't pick it up. Yet the dump fees, when you used to, when you used to be able to dump for free if you were a Decav County resident. Now you have to pay fees. So they, you, if, if we were to decrease the millage rate, they would use it as an excuse to decrease services. When then that, uh, makes people have to go out of their pocket and pay for the same services. Like I just spent. Dollars at the dump for stuff that used to be picked up by the county. So there are some, there, there, it basically, I think there needs to be better transparency. On how much money we're collecting, how it's being spent. And get that under wraps. And once we get that under wraps, we may be able to reduce the millage rate because we're probably going to find a lot of money laying around.
Commissioner Johnson, uh, same question to you. I'll abbreviate it. Uh, do you think? That Decav County should consider reducing its millage rate to help homeowners? Three minutes.
Thank you, sir. I just wanted to say, uh, on behalf of our sanitation worker, that's one of the, the best services that residents talk about. These folks work hard. During the, this pandemic, they came into work, they made a difference. A lot of them got sick. They still pressed on. So our sanitation workers. Are some of the best in the world. And so I always want to say publicly, we need to commend them for their service and what they're doing. Uh, and not take anything away from them. They've had hard times and they struggle, but we need to make sure those essential workers.
I didn't say anything about sanitation workers. I said the service itself.
We have, that's the people that do the service. And so, Mr.
I applaud the people that do the service.
Question. Yeah, let, let's let Commissioner Johnson finish.
And I, and I didn't mention any names. So I was just commending the sanitation workers. So it wasn't a back and forth. But the other part is the homestead exemption freeze that we had, have now. I champion that. So if you have your home. The value that you buy that it stays at that value until you sell your home is a, is a great opportunity. One of the few municipalities that have that. And it has helped a lot of folks who, uh, county taxes have not risen in a long time. Our school taxes, that's different. We don't control that part. But the county taxes are it. But Dan, you touched on something that we may have to talk to our state legislators about. To look at trying to have an assessment of property every other year instead of every year. And that can help a lot of folks who are in homes and values have gone up, that we can get them a chance to have a breather. And to get some relief, uh, as it relates to that. So thank you for allowing me to speak.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. And, uh, you know, I just, as a personal experience, I think in Alabama where I'm from, they do that like every four years and that state is perpetually broke all the time. Uh, so there's got to be a middle ground, uh, somewhere. I do want to echo, uh, I've, I've got county garbage service, uh, and I know. Mr. Bell, you weren't, uh, speaking ill of them, but I did want to echo the fact that I have appreciated our, our county sanitation workers as well. Uh, working hard. That is, it is a more dangerous job than people realize. Riding on the back of a truck at. High speeds and, uh, handling people's garbage is not, uh, always conducive to your health. So I do want to echo that as well. Um, so we have got about nine minutes left. This has been a really great one. A lot of, a lot of passion, a lot of great back and forth. I got, I got a question and I'm going to combine these two questions. Um, and we will start with, uh, Andrew Bell. Uh, Andrew, what do you think is the best decision that Decav County has made in the last four years? And what do you think is the worst decision Decav County has made in the last four years? And we'll give you three minutes.
Uh, the best decision they made in the last four years. Like I said earlier, I have to give Commissioner Johnson the credit for the library, uh, on Keller Road. Uh, and, uh, the senior, uh, uh, the senior center over there. And the worst is gotta be the planning and stability department by far. Uh, they aren't doing what they're supposed to be doing for the county. Uh, they're making it harder. And let me, let me also put in that cold complaints. Uh, it seems that they're in the nature of harassing people that have lived in the, in the, in the neighborhood for 40 and 50 years. That built this county, that made it what it is. Uh, they have no new ideas for development. Uh, so those are my best and my worst.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Johnson, same question to you. What is the best decision the county has made in the last four years? And what is the worst decision the county has made in the last four years?
I think investing and, and getting ourselves out of debt, we, we, we now have a cash reserve of over $120 million. Uh, we've used a good fiscal policy to keep our taxes low, uh, for our residents and trying to provide the services. In the midst of coming through a pandemic, in the midst of coming to the great recession, where our budgets were hit, uh, due to cityhood and annexations. Uh, and those things have helped us to be where we are today, to provide the sidewalks, to provide our, uh, parks and wreck. The tools they need to, to build these fire stations, uh, to get our traffic lights up, to pave our roads. I think being in good fiscal standing and good fiscal health, uh, has really allowed us to move forward. And doing some of the essential things that we could not do because we didn't have the extra funds to invest, uh, in our infrastructure, make things happen. Then I also say, the other part is also trying to do more infrastructure. Uh, is one of the things I think we need to do more of, uh, to, to get out here and to do it. But you can only spend a dollar one time. And so continue to try to press the county to show, uh, that we can move forward and provide the best quality of life. Uh, for the residents that we serve and help the families and young people who are coming up, uh, to the best and brightest in our community.
Thank you, Commissioner. Well, we are, uh, believe it or not, we are out of all of our questions. This, this might be something I have to write down. Uh, cause normally we don't have time to get to them all. So this has been a great forum. I'm really grateful. I got to spend this time with you both. Uh, to learn a little bit more about your candidacies and I'm grateful that our readers got a chance to listen to it as well. Uh, we're going to start with two minute closing statement. Uh, we're going to start with, uh, Andrew Bell, and then we're going to give Commissioner Johnson the last word. Uh, Andrew Bell, you have two minutes.
Uh, thanks again, Dan, for giving me the opportunity to, uh, address your audience. Uh, Decatur's native son, I remember, uh, when we played at the park, summer camps. Uh, when we had movie theaters, when we had bowling alleys, when the roads were smooth. Uh, when the, when there wasn't, uh, the, all these gangs and the violence. When it was more like South Decav and not like Chicago. I remember those days. Uh, get us back to those days. I want to get us back to better days. Uh, it's time for new leadership. It's time for a change. It's time for new ideas. Uh, vote for Andrew Bell, starting, uh, May 2nd and, uh, through the voting day, May 24th. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Johnson, uh, you will have the last word. Two minutes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan, and to Decaturish for this great forum to be a part. Thank you, Mr. Bell, uh, for your service. Uh, we appreciate that. And thank you for helping to make a difference. I just want to end with talking about what we doing and what we're moving forward to. It's all about economic development, getting a $380 million investment. That's going to create, uh, jobs and economic well-being for, uh, West Decav, Southwest Decav area. You see the sidewalks, you see the senior centers, you see the new fire stations coming up. You see the new senior apartments that we put up. You'd be able to walk on our trails, Michelle Obama Trail. You got to perform in our center. That's second to none when we have great performance. And now we're doing a 1,000 seat outdoor amphitheater. So now we'll be able to have concerts. Plays and graduations right in our district. That happened because of us working together, uh, me bringing a vision. To, uh, fruition and, and you helping me alongside to collaborate and build partnerships. I didn't just get here just to sit around. I went to work, rolled up my sleeves because District Three, we have some of the best people in the world. We work together to focus on food distributions. We got through in terms of working on testing for COVID and shots because I care about you. We're working with, um, just making sure folks who need food and folks who are homeless, they have a place to stay. We did over $30 million in rental assistance for people who were behind in their rent. We also working just to make a difference. Uh, we work with a, create a new animal shelter. Which is one of the best shelters in the state of Georgia. And we did that with the investments. We made over $8 million. So you've seen the results. We got $127 million in the bank. We paid over 200 miles of roads. And we're doing it and keeping our taxes low. So thank you. Please vote for Larry Johnson. Results you can see May 2nd through the 20th, it's early voting. May 24th, my birthday is May 22nd, but let's get it done. District Three, you can count on me. God bless you and you all stay strong. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Johnson, Andrew Bell, thank you both for participating in such a lively, uh, informative debate.
All right.
This is, I got, I got to do a little speech, so hang tight. Uh, this is, uh, this is Decaturish.com, uh, Twitch show. I am your host, editor and publisher, Dan Wisenhunt. This has been the District Three County Commission Debate. If you missed this debate, don't worry. We're going to upload all of this to YouTube. Uh, in the Decaturish YouTube channel in the coming days. So you could check it out there. We're going to post it on our website. So you won't miss it. Um, if you appreciate this debate, if you appreciate the opportunities we provide, please, please, please. Visit supportmylocalnews.com. That is the website that'll take you to support Decaturish.com. Uh, it supports everything that we do. It supports sending reporters to meetings. It supports sending photographers to fun events. Uh, it, it keeps us rolling. So we really appreciate it. If you'd go visit that and sign up. Also, all of our elections coverage can be found at Decaturishvotes.com. That's where you'll find coverage of, of. All of our issues. We'll have all the candidate questionnaires there. We'll have the videos posted there as well. Uh, early voting does start May 2nd. The primary is May 24th. Please get out and vote, everybody. Uh, we will be back at 1:00 PM. Uh, we will be doing the forum, uh, for Super District Seven. So I encourage you all to tune in and we'll see you then. Bye-bye, everybody.
All right. Thanks. Appreciate it.